Well, I am so happy to be with all of you today. Thank you so much for that very warm welcome. For those that don't know me, my name is Meg Kilcoyne. I'm your state representative. I represent the town of Clinton at the State House along with five other communities surrounding the town of Clinton. And I always love coming to this event. I think this is the third time I've been able to come visit you on your mock town meeting because one of the most important things that we can do for our community, for our families, for our lives, is to participate in our local government and take action. My job is to represent the voices of about 42,000 people in this community of central Massachusetts. I take my role very seriously and I'm very humbled and honored to be able to take votes on behalf of the communities here in central Massachusetts and the town of Clinton as well as work to try to do what I can to make sure that we're getting resources back here. But despite having that ability, despite having that responsibility and authority to take votes, the power that I have really is the power that all of you have. I can only, the only reason I'm able to do what I do is because my job is to listen to the residents of these communities so I can best be an advocate for them. But the one thing that I know is that while I'm proud of the work that I've, we've been able to do at the State House in bringing funding back to this town of passing laws that will make a difference in people's lives, not just here but across the Commonwealth, the power that I have isn't the thing that makes the most difference in all of our lives. That truly lies within the power that you have, the power that you're going to experience today. Now, you may not be taking place in, at the actual town meeting or participating, I should say, in the actual town meeting, but you're practicing and learning how to make a difference in your communities right now. Just to put it in perspective, I don't think I understood what a town meeting was until I was out of school and old enough to realize what was going on in the towns that I lived in. Because, but what is important, what you're learning now, at this very moment, what you've been working towards, is understanding how you can take action in the very place that you live, in creating this warrant and taking votes that will have a huge impact on the town and the people and your neighbors and your families. So I just want to commend all of you on all the work that you've done. I am so incredibly impressed. And really, the future is you. Sitting amongst you right now, you maybe living in Clinton or somewhere else where you're going to be able to take action, to participate in town meeting, maybe to run for local office, maybe to run for a local committee or your select board, or maybe even one day run for state representative in the district where you are and really make a positive impact on not just your life, but everyone's around you. And I think that if we can all sort of take the lessons that we've learned today and take that in our everyday lives, I think the future is going to be in good hands. So I'm so excited to be with you today. I always love watching and, and learning about the warrants that you've created, seeing how the votes play out, and, and just have fun with it. It is a really interesting process, one that I love, and you know, I think you guys are about to go on summer break soon. If you ever want to come visit the State, State House, come visit me in my office. We love giving people tours. We can take you around the building and you can learn a little bit more of the history of the Commonwealth, including some local Clinton history actually, in the State House. And just have fun today, enjoy it. I know you guys have worked so hard all year, so enjoy the last couple of weeks of school and have a great summer. And before we kick off, I'm going to lead all of us in the Pledge of Allegiance together. So if we can all take a stand with your hats and wearing them. And what's the flag? Can everyone see the flag? It's kind of in the corner here, but, alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, everybody. Great job. Have a fun day today. And I'll be sitting and watching for a little bit, so if we, at the end, if anybody wants to come up and say hi or learn more about the State House, I'll be here. So, thank you all. Thank you.
We're going to just ask, turn on the stage. We'll just quickly just say your name and then we'll.
Alright, welcome to eighth grade town meeting. This is a great experience for all of us, you especially, but for all of us who are kind of used to this. So start off with introductions. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Julie Perouse and I'm a member of the Select Board.
Matt Coleman, member of the Select.
Laura Taylor, Clinton Parks and Rec.
Brendan Bailey, I'm on the School Committee.
Lisa Profit, Department of Public Works.
Phil Duffy, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Chris Willoughby, Clinton Police Department.
Brian Coyne, also with the Clinton Police Department.
And I'm Terry Ngano, I'm the Town Moderator. So why don't we begin with Article One? You've done a lot of work on these, I can see. So let's, let's get going.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer, transfer from the stabilization fund the sum of $221,000 or any other sum said some to be expended by the Facilities and Grounds Department to fund the projects as described below or act in any manner related thereto. A, to spend $84,000 to repair or replace the Lakeside Basketball Court and add bleachers and lighting. B, to spend $51,800 to level and seed the Vale Street softball field, build dugouts, add safety netting, and add strip drain, a strip drain system for drainage around the field perimeter. C, to spend $84,500 to convert the existing varsity football field from grass to turf, add a visitor section of bleachers, add padding around the goalpost, and two goalpost nets.
Second. Alright, Article One has been moved and seconded. We have student speakers.
Do student speakers, do student speakers come up? I have a speech right here.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jenna Stevens. Here, the citizens of the town, to spend $221,000 to improve the athletic facilities in our town. There are many issues in these places that we want to address. There are many campaigns that need to be taken to address. These places are definitely the first words and need to be well taken care of in the reports of the county attorney. Without voting, there is a risk of giving money to the county attorney. Sport, hockey, and exercise, people of those groups, the bowling grounds, they give their private activities to participate. Children, ill-oriented, extreme crime, everybody, alternative activities. The Golden Ball, the Golden Police, using facilities that are too stressed. One of your programs, like to go, is to make it look like it's a side path.
The court floor is cracked, there's limited seating, there's a lack of lighting, and hoops are double-rimmed and old. Currently, these courts are maintained by the Clinton Housing Authority. These courts are located in an area of the town with a high rate of poverty. Having the town pitch in to help the housing authority improve the courts would benefit the people living there. At these courts, our warrant would pay to replace the court floor, reducing the likelihood of tripping. Our warrant would also pay for bleachers so that parents and friends can watch games as they are played. Lastly, we would include the cost of adding solar-powered lights. These will illuminate the court floor so that games can go on longer and can be seen at night during the summer. We would also replace the double rims with single rims because it gives players less room for error.
Another area that our warrant focuses on is Savage Field, which is located on Vale Street. Currently, there are several issues with the softball field. For example, when it rains, the field floods. Overtime, these floods have caused holes and muddling issues which make it difficult to play on. Our warrant pays to level the field in order to prevent injuries and allow them to play more efficiently. It would also cover the cost to add a perimeter strip drainage system similar to the one currently at the track. We will prevent the ground from becoming unlevel again. Another issue at this location is the size of the dugouts at the softball field. The baseball field dugouts have roofs and are significantly larger than the softball field dugouts. Having quality dugouts is important because foul balls can sometimes drop into the dugout and injure a player. We would like to see the dugouts of the softball field be replaced and made to the same standards as the ones at the baseball field. Another serious issue that regularly occurs is cars being hit by foul balls. Both of us and another one of our classmates have personally hit foul balls that have caused dents in cars. Adding a safety netting barrier would prevent these accidents, which occur during almost every softball game. The last location that our warrant would improve is the varsity football field currently located in the middle of the track. One major change that our warrant would pay for is converting the field from grass to turf. Turf is cheaper than grass in the long run because it is more durable and takes less money to maintain. We would also like to add padding around goalposts because plays may run, players may run into them if there's a play in the end zone. There have been several instances at the college and professional level where players have been injured by running into a pole. At the moment, there are bleachers for the home team, but not for the visiting team. We would like to build a section equal in size on the other side of the field to provide seating for visiting teams and their families. Lastly, we would like to add two goalpost nets to prevent the balls from getting damaged by the asphalt from the track. This warrant would be very helpful for student athletes because it would fix many issues with the current athletic fields and courts. We appreciate your time and hope you vote yes.
Yes. Chris, could you adjust that microphone a little bit so that we, I think hopefully everybody heard them here, but I don't know if we heard them too well up here.
Lower it.
Lower it.
Heard, lower it physically or?
Lower the volume. So it's more of a.
And the taller, the taller students may have to stoop a bit, but the shorter students at least can, can speak right into it. Alright. Questions, comments, or discussion on what you just heard from the group or from county officials?
Jadiya Jiran, I don't think we need to add bleachers to the Lakeside Basketball Court. I feel like it's unnecessary because the basketball court is really small.
Talk right into that microphone.
Finn Evangelist, I agree with the safety netting because there's been multiple instances when my family's cars have been hit by stray softballs.
Kids, we really want to hear what, what you, what you, you know, what you're saying and your opinions, but you're going to have to get almost like I am right here. I'm practically, I got a loud enough voice too, and you, you don't always have that.
Only Mr. Murray, I think it's a technical issue. These, I don't believe these speakers at the front of the stage are on. I think all the sound is coming out of the speaker up above the stage and we're behind it. I think that may be why we can't hear us. Or is this only amplifying us?
Ron Sisneros, Auburn Street. I agree with most of.
Real close. Yep. Yep, and right into it, an inch away maybe.
Ron Sisneros, Auburn Street. I agree with most of Article One, but not Part C because our football field has good well-taking care of grass and turf is just an unneeded expense.
Thank you. Someone, someone on the stage have something to say? Yes, Chief Coyne.
I would be highly in favor, Chief Coyne, Police Department. I'd be highly in favor of this article. I think that any, any recreational areas and safe things and for kids to do needs to be, we need to, we need to have these safe spaces for kids to recreate, to get together, to stay out of trouble. I think any studies show that kids get in trouble the most between after school and about 7:00 PM. So if we give them something positive to do in a safe place, I've been over Lakeside Basketball Courts myself there and.
I need to repair.
I love you guys came up with the netting at Vale Street and to upgrade the dugouts would be great too. And conversion of football field to grass to turf, I don't know if we did have to cut something out maybe there, but I'm definitely in favor of this article.
Lily Baez, Bristol Ave. I agree with Article One, Section B, which is to level and seed the softball field at Vale Street because it would help prevent an injury to any of the athletes.
Thank you. Go ahead, young lady.
Yeah, Asada. I agree with this article because when places like these are maintained, it creates a healthy and safe environment for kids and maybe even adults.
Jackson, go ahead.
Jackson Buat, I just wanted to point it out that we already have padding around the goalposts on our varsity field, so that would actually lower the cost of the warrant. And that's all.
Mr. Murray, members of the town meeting, I wish to speak in favor of this article for this reason, having nothing to do with the intended outcome, but because of this, it as a warrant article, it is very explicit, specific about what it proposes to do, it has been well explained, it is well-written, and it is reasonable. And when, so when you come to town meeting, seeking funding for something, you're going to often face, face questions, and the more specific you are in your warrant request, the better your chances are of succeeding before the voters. So because it is a well-written, specific, and reasonable article, I support it.
We ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so we've heard some discussion on Article One. All those in favor of Article One, please signify by raising your hand now, please. Thank you, hands down. And those opposed, hands up. Alright, the article has been, the article has been approved. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Go ahead, Julie.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from the stabilization fund or transfer from available funds the sum of $656,000 or any other sum said some to be expended by the Department of Public Works for road resurfacing, filling potholes, repairing sidewalks, adding new sidewalks, excuse me, and sidewalk barriers as described below or act in any manner related thereto. A, to build and/or replace 4.3 miles of sidewalks in locations that are heavily trafficked to be determined by the Department of Public Works. B, to build 11 speed bumps, two on the streets in front of each school and five on High Street near the intersections. C, to create four miles of bike lanes on main roads which are to be determined by the Department of Public Works. D, to fill and repair 100 potholes on streets to be determined by the Department of Public Works. E, to apply to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for a variance in speeding fines to increase the fines from 100 to $150 and from $10 for every additional mile per hour over the speed limit to $15 for every additional mile per hour over the speed limit. F, the Clinton Police Department will create a list of parking offenses and fines to be issued to those responsible for breaking parking laws in town. Fines and fences will be based on parking ticket fines and code violations currently being used by the city of Boston.
Are you seconding that?
Second.
Alright, Article Two has been moved and seconded. We have student speakers.
Do student speakers, I have a speech up here. Student speakers first.
Remember, speak right into it. I would say be about one inch away, okay, kids?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Madison Suttle.
My name is Drew Ask.
Today, we are presenting issues with the roads in town and how to fix them, specifically sidewalks, speed bumps, potholes, bike lanes, speeding fines, and parking fines. There are several roads in desperate need of sidewalks, which is, which is a safety hazard. There are also sidewalks that are cracking or have plants growing on them, which pedestrians are likely to trip on. Our warrant is requesting money to be used for building sidewalks specifically on busy roads. According to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, 42 pedestrians were hit by cars and killed in November of last year. That was only November, and that shows why we need to address this issue. For example, lots of kids walk on West Boylston Street to get to school, and some of the sidewalks are damaged or non-existent. These sidewalks should be built so that kids can walk to school without the risk of being injured by a car. Speeding is a major issue in the town of Clinton. There are several cars that get pulled over almost every day in front of the schools because they are speeding in a school zone. This is why we are proposing that two rubber speed bumps are built on the streets adjacent to each of the schools to slow down traffic. South Asphalt Engineering, Inc. has reported that speed bumps reduce the number of accidents by forcing drivers to slow down. Another place we want to put speed bumps is High Street because it is one of the busiest streets in Clinton and has several intersections. It is a narrow street without a lot of parking, making visibility, visibility low and driving dangerous. These speed bumps will force drivers to slow down and make sure that pedestrians are safe. Citizens of Clinton can often be seen driving around town on their bikes. However, it is often dangerous for them because there are not many bike lanes. Biking is eco-friendly, good exercise, and an efficient way to travel around a small town like ours. Furthermore, bikes do not cause as much damage to roads compared to cars, which would help solve the pothole issue in town. Currently, there are only a few bike lanes near Fuller Field and on Water Street. Our warrant would pay to create four miles of bike lanes to be built along the busiest roads in town. For example, we would like to see them be built on West Boylston Street so that kids can ride their bikes to school. Our research shows that Clinton is connected to a rail trail, and we would like to see bike lanes connected to that rail trail to allow people to more easily access the rail trail system.
Another issue facing bikers and drivers is the amount of potholes throughout our streets.
Little close, little closer to the mic, I'm sorry.
Potholes are dangerous because they can not only damage our vehicles, but they can put people in danger of being hurt. Drivers spend $1,000 per year because of damages caused to their car from potholes. Our warrant would not cause taxes to go up $1,000 per household. Therefore, residents would actually be saving money. Our warrant is asking for enough money to fix up to 100 potholes in town, which would help drivers and bikers safely travel without worrying about damaging their vehicles. Speeding is a huge problem in town, and we regularly see people getting pulled over in front of the middle school for speeding during school hours. This poses as a safety hazard for kids walking to and from school. According to the law firm Barry Feinstein, there were close to 76,000 crashes reported in Massachusetts alone in 2020 where speeding was a factor in the accident. We believe that speeding fines are not enough of a deterrent because they are not only, they are not high enough. This warrant will increase the fine for speeding in hopes that it will stop people from speeding. We will probably need to apply for a variance with the state, but we feel this is a necessary precaution to save lives. Being a small town, legal parking tends to be one of the bigger issues we deal with, especially in the downtown area. We tried doing research through the town website and bylaws, but were unable to find information about types of illegal parking and fines. This is a problem because if they were not clearly stated, then more people will tend to park wherever they wish. We are proposing that the town of Clinton creates a list of parking offenses and their fines and publishes it. We have researched the city of Boston's and found it to be a good guideline for our offenses and fines. We will leave this task up to the Clinton Police Department. Thank you for listening to our proposal and helping to improve the town and its safety record. We hope that you vote to support our.
Alright, thank you. There's a lot here. There's a lot in this one, no doubt about it. Lisa, you must have something to say about this. No?
Thank you for bringing this article forward. It's a great article. It's comprehensive and.
Just to remind the students anyway, sorry, did you slip?
Sure, Lisa Profit, Department of Public Works. Thank you for bringing this article. It's an important one, and we would certainly appreciate $656,000 for road resurfacing and various things, so thank you. A few comments to make with regard to the speed bumps specifically in front of the school. I did make contact with Mass Department Transportation. So West Boylston Street is Route 110, which means although the town maintains it, it is a state where you would need state people, which they possibly wouldn't bring it to. Speaking to them, the town of Rock actually puts speed bumps in front of their school, so it is something that can be done. They are removable, they're inflatable, they're removable, they're flattable. So during the school year, they would be in place, and then they could be removed for the summer. They could also be removed for smaller purposes to make it easier for the town to know that area. So that is a possibility. But you would need to approach the state, which you can do, and if you need any further information, I'd be happy to provide you where you can look to that. With regard to the bike lanes, I do think that's a great idea, put bike lane up towards school. The sidewalk from, say, Dunkin' Donuts all the way to the school could certainly use an improvement to make it more walkable to get to both the middle and the high school. So that's a great idea as well. Speaking of the rail trail, Greenway Conservation Trust has really been instrumental in getting the rail trail together to connect to various other towns, and we'd love to be able to put more sidewalks in place or, or bike lanes in place to be able to connect to that, which will eventually go through the tunnel. It's been worked on, the town meeting has approved for that to be, to be part of it, which would be fantastic. So, thank you, and I'm in full support of this work. Thank you very much.
Other, other questions or comments?
I'll speak to, I'm Phil Duffy, I'm the Town's Community and Economic Development Director, and in that office, I work very frequently with the Department of Public Works on finding funding to do infrastructure improvements, sidewalks and roadways, rail trails. I work with the police department as well on parking enforcement and establishing parking zones in the downtown. I speak in favor of this article. Lisa knows that I'll never say no to a sidewalk. I think that Clinton is a very walkable community. That's one of its unique virtues. We're a very small community, everything is close together, and it's a really great place to walk around. And so when we build sidewalks, we make Clinton a better Clinton. I would suggest however, that, that an amendment to this article, and I would suggest that we amend Section B, to strike Section B and replace it with a section to read, "to install traffic calming and/or speed reduction devices on High Street and in vicinity of schools." Is there a second to that? For, for.
I want to make a second to the, we've to motion to change Murphy instead of raising the evidence, a second.
Second, okay, so Article, Article Two, Section B is being amended to, to include, I didn't quite get that, but it would be.
I'll read it again, Terry, and then we can open it up. For having been seconded, we can now have a discussion about, about the proposed change before we vote on it.
The idea is, I think, instead of having specificities using the phrase speed bumps, you want to just kind of change that.
Yes.
School zones or some sort of reduction.
Traffic calming and/or speed reduction devices.
Would anyone like to hear him speak? I know that's like, oh, that are community students who are ranking about speed bumps.
Calicooney, Orange Street. I really like Part A because I think the sidewalks on like, on the street coming from the school are really bumpy and there's like overgrown weeds, and on the walk here, some people were tripping. So I think like fixing them is, will help people stay safe while they're walking.
Thank you. Now, what, what's happened though is that Mr. Duffy has proposed an amendment, and we really should be just talking now about the amendment.
Only talking about speed bumps.
Yes.
Want to make about speed bumps.
So, yep, and only Section B we're talking about. Section B. So, yep, and only Section B we're talking about. Section B. So if you have a comment on Section B, please come forward.
Caitlin Moneway from Grove Street. I would like to know what other devices you would like to put instead of just speed bumps.
Well, to be honest, because normally before we do something like this, uh, we study it. There are a number of different strategies that can be adopted to um basically address the issue of, of, if I understood your question correctly. Um, there are things like what they call a road diet, making the road narrower so that drivers are compelled to drive more slowly. There can be difference, other, other surface treatments, like uh making a kind of a, a rumble bed. There can be signage, flashing beacons. And I'm not convinced, without having taken a look at it, that speed bumps, particularly on High Street, where you have a lot of cars making awkward angled movements, um, and cars that have to move very slowly already because they have to be wary of cars pulling, backing out of the angled parking spaces. If um, speed bumps specifically are the right strategy for that location. So the, I, I propose the amendment so that we may still accomplish the goal, but that we may not be limited to what might not be the best strategy for that particular location.
The language purposely be a little sort of vague and gives the town more options.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on B? Article Two B only. Okay, good idea.
My name's Chloe Jess, which are in the eighth street. Um, I agree with the amendment made because it would be very difficult to like get all the cars and everyone out of the high street since it's very populated.
All right, why don't we? Yes, but now remember, you're not voting on Article Two. You are only voting for Mr. Duffy's amendment, which has been discussed, has been motioned and seconded. So all those in favor of amending Article Two B um, to really kind of, a- as Mr. Murray said, to be a little bit more vague so that gives the town other options, not just speed bumps, but other options to slow traffic down. Um, if you're ready for that, um, please raise your hand if you are uh in favor of the amendment. Hands up. All right, thank you. Hands down. And then uh, all, all those opposed to the amendment.
You want there to be a speed bump specifically, raise your.
All right, thank you. So the amendment is approved. So um, Article Two B has been changed, all right?
So now we're on discussion about any part of it.
Yes.
Sidewalk speeding issues, anything.
Any, anything in Article Two.
Get your credit, so raise your hand if you'd like to speak.
I'm Lily Fagoni, and I live on Lancaster Road. I just need clarification on part C because would we extend the width of the road or would we just paint on the lanes, making the road smaller for cars?
That's a good question.
Anyone from that class like to say what they were thinking in regards to biking, to thinking of making all roads moving, making to be bigger? Or were you thinking of making this down, making roads?
I know very little about this, but I do know some roads are narrow so that to add a bike lane obviously makes them even more narrow, and that could be a real problem. Yeah, do that. Mr. Duffy, you something to say?
Well, it is your town meeting, but on background, I can tell you that years ago, the town did something that was called a complete street study, which is a, a, of, an examination, an assessment of all of our roads in town with an eye specifically towards uh what they call multimodal transportation, which means designing roads not just for cars, but for bicycles, for pedestrians, for peop- for people with limited mobility, and to see how you can make your roadway, the width of the road, work for as many users as possible. And in that study, we basically classified different roads as to their suitability um, and desirability for things like a bike path. Which is say, for instance, I think you might use, if you lived on Lancaster Road. Lancaster Road, while narrow, would, would might be a place for a bike path. But if you lived on, say, Rain Ave or, or Kent Street, which is just off of that, just a small dead end road, you don't need a bike path on a, on a small lightly traveled road. So in terms of identifying which roads would be best candidates for bike paths, town already has done a study of that. Um, and identifying how that bike path would be accommodated, it would be on a road-to-road basis, but almost in every instance, it would be by making the, by taking it out of the existing paved width. And there's a very simple reason for that. It's because we already have stormwater in all the roads, the catch pieces, you know, which are at the edge of the road, and those are extraordinarily expensive to move. So to make a road wider is actually a very expensive proposition. So.
Thank you for that, those details. Um, is there anyone else who would like to go make it?
Dominic Braga, Eileen Avenue. I disagree with Article Two, Section E, because I believe that for new drivers, they could accidentally be speeding. They shouldn't be harsh, harsh, punished so harshly. I believe that it should only be a price increase for every rather five miles of one mile per hour over there.
Oh, that's for E, thank you. Somebody way over?
Hi, Laura Mollas, Main Street. I agree with part A because me and my friends regularly use sidewalks to get around, and we often trip because of the amount of potholes and cracks and holes there are. So that's it. Thank you.
Somebody over here.
Marilla Charles, Haskell Avenue. I think we should add bike lanes because it will lower the risk of cyclists being hit by cars.
I just want to speak on F, and I want to thank you guys for bringing this, Brian Coyne, police, police chief. This is something that directly, as a result of meeting with you today and reading this, that we're going to put into place. We don't currently have the parking offenses and fines listed anywhere. That's a, that's a great idea. We should have the parking fences and fines listed on our website or, or somewhere where the public has access to it. Because of this and the idea you guys brought up today, we're going to do that and make sure that's done. That's great stuff. Uh, fines and fences based on the city of Boston. What we do i- i- as police officers and parking enforcement and other things, we look at what other communities are doing, what other cities and towns are doing. And we kind of take ideas. I always say we don't need to reinvent the wheel. So to take the city of Boston and bring it to Clinton, I don't think is a great idea. But maybe if the city of Boston is doing something in enforcement and fines that, that we could take and, and bring into our community and make it work, I think that's great. I think the city of Boston sees something like Clinton is doing the right way, that they could take it into the city and make it work. So I don't think we should take everything they're doing. But certainly, and, and we do look around at different communities, especially communities that look like us, the same type of downtown areas, same type of parking problems, and, and try to get uh solutions and things that they're using. So I wouldn't take everything they do, but I do appreciate you guys saying a list of parking offenses and fines. I think that's a great idea, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure that we do that because of this here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the common ones I get when introducing one town meeting to the students is that they feel like, oh, well, our ideas may not actually happen. You just heard today from the chief police that they're really gonna go and make this happen. So I just, that's, you know, the example of the kids in town really going to make a difference in your own community. And just, uh, just so you know, just so it's clear, um, the city of Boston has a chart where it just says like double parking, this is the fine. Then this is the repeat fine. You know, handicap parking, to be part of, well, in handicaps park, we're not supposed to be, this is the fine and this is the repeat fine. So that's what they were referencing is that he just had a very clear chart and then thinking that's what they're trying to then have.
Excellent, great idea.
All right, we ready to vote?
We, we are ready to vote.
Okay, so uh, take another, one last look at Article Two. We know that Article B has been changed, all right? And now we're voting on the entire article, Article Two. So all those in favor of Article Two as presented, other than B, as was amended, please signify by raising your hand now, please. All right, thank you. And those opposed. All right, the article has been approved. Nice job. Very good.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from the stabilization fund or take from available funds the sum of one hundred thousand dollars or any other sum, said sum to construct a fenced sand volleyball court located on the field between the Clinton Middle School and Clinton High School or act in any manner relating thereto.
Second. All right, Article Three has been moved and seconded. Student speakers, please, on Article Three. And the student speakers, uh, just because, um, why don't you kind of look at me as you start? Just, and I'll give you a thumbs up if we can hear you, and I hate to say it, a thumbs down if, if you're gonna have to get closer, okay? Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Miguel Chavez Fretes.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Roger Casino. We are proposing to construct a sand volleyball court behind the tennis courts located between the middle school and high school. We're asking for one hundred thousand dollars to construct this court.
You may be asking why you should say yes to this one article. Well, a sand volleyball court could be really interesting and will attract people that don't like other sports that this town has to offer. The town of Clinton's population has been changing, and every day, new people move into Clinton from many different countries.
The addition of a sand volleyball court will add to the various sports that the Clinton facilities already have. In town, there are baseball and softball fields, soccer fields, basketball courts, and other playgrounds. A sand volleyball court will add to the recreation that children and adults enjoy in Clinton.
I have been living in Clinton for two years now, and I've come across people that really would like to play volleyball. Clinton High School does not offer volleyball as a sport. So the addition of a sand volleyball court will offer those who would like to play volleyball a location to do so. When we were brainstorming ideas for our proposal, the majority of our class agreed that they would like to have this court, that they would like this court to be added.
We chose the location behind the tennis courts between the high school and middle school because students could use the course after school. We also chose this location because there is a parking available for community members after school hours and on weekends.
We thank you for listening to our proposal and strongly urge you to vote, to say yes uh to the construction of a sand volleyball court in Clinton.
Thank you.
Thank you. You couldn't hear? This, that's a, I think, a great idea. I just want to take, I just want to take one minute to say, uh, as, as a former superintendent of schools, um, when it came to, when it comes to like volleyball, I was the bad guy that, that um cut the volleyball team um at Clinton High School, both the boys and the girls, although it was fairly popular. We had no money back in those days. But I did make a comeback, and I'm also the co-founder with Mr. Morrison of March Madness Volleyball that Clinton High plays every year in March between seasons. And many, many Clinton High students participate. In fact, anybody can. Has, not, not based on talent. Uh, it's, it's a great time for, for kids. So I, I'm into volleyball, believe it or not.
There are several students who have been speaking recently wanting to bring the volleyball team back. So is there someone who would like to get their credit for the day and go and talk to women that think we should have volleyball at CMS? Go ahead, Lisa.
Hi, my name's Isabel Burton. I live on Beacon Street. And I agree with Article Three because the volleyball court is one of the few sports options that is yet to be added to our town. By adding a volleyball court, it would allow those who enjoy this sport to practice it with the court that is provided by their town.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Bailey of the school committee may have something to say about this.
All right, first off, on the uh, on the warrant article, um, there, at the town meeting, which is uh, next week, I believe, there's an article on there about building a middle school, new middle school, and I won't get into that. But if they do, what happens with that? If, if, when that project's done one way or another, if there is area up there still, I would, if I'm still on the school committee, that's something we can address, is, is putting a, a volleyball court there. I don't know how the design is with, I don't know where the spot's gonna be. I'm not sure how the school's gonna work, but it would be something we could address. But on the volleyball, kind of, I can speak to the eighth grade class at your uh step-up uh program here in a week. And that was kind of one of the things I was gonna talk to you about. If there's any sport or anything that you want the school to do, was about three or four years ago, maybe four, four, five years ago, when the students wanted to have lacrosse and they wanted to have indoor track. The indoor track team started and it's going really, I don't know how many athletes he has now, but I know they're taking part in district events. The lacrosse, although we didn't have enough kids to have our own team, uh, our athletic director went out and we, we co-op, we, our boys and girls play lacrosse with Hudson. So if you want to start, restart up a volleyball program, we can, um, yeah, Julie's daughter has the most goals in, 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 on that team. If you want to bring up a volleyball team, get with your coaches, get with the athletic director. And, you know, if you don't have enough for our own team, he can go out to other schools and see if they need players, and maybe we co-op with them. So please, like you're doing here, bring it up. It doesn't happen by, by complaining. It happens by your actions.
Yep, very good.
And also like to go make our comments?
Yep, go ahead.
Nice and close to the mic.
I'm Josephine Setti. I live on Bum on Ave, and I agree with Article Three because I know a lot of people who would play volleyball, but can't because there's no proper court.
Very good.
After Julie, we'll have one more person speak and we'll vote on this one?
I agree with Article Three because I see a lot of people play volleyball in different places. Um, and yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have one more. So if anyone hasn't spoken yet, would you like to?
Way over?
Go ahead.
I think you picked a very good location, too. That's kind of like Never Never Land between those.
Especially if you saw that there's gonna be construction and everything.
Yep, yep.
Like, why not?
Yeah.
Menwala Silva, Chestnut Street. I think that this article is a very good idea 'cause I personally struggle to find places to play volleyball. And I think that adding a proper court to play in would also benefit, you know, bringing a volleyball team back to Clinton.
Thank you.
Was I gonna do some, getting money and then ask for something a little bit more fun because I can promise you this is a very loud grade.
I know, yeah, I know you're a fun guy, so go ahead.
Mr. Gano, can I request a voice vote?
Sure, we can do that. Do you want to lead that yourself? Go ahead.
Oh, sure.
All right. We're gonna do a voice vote, okay? This, not the hands, voice.
So it's based on volume, okay? So all those in favor of Article Three, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay.
The article is approved, and I was put in my place for canceling volleyball. Most definitely. Thank you. All right, the article is approved. Go ahead, Jim.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from the stabilization fund or take from available funds the sum of three million, three hundred thousand dollars or any other sum, said sum to be expended through the select board as they see fit for
Yes.
for the purposes as described below or act in any manner relating thereto. One, or excuse me, A, to create a Clinton community aggregate program through the creation of a solar farm made up of approximately one hundred, two hundred square foot solar panels to be located on the lot at one seventy-two Sterling Street. The electricity generated from this farm will be solely available to the residents of Clinton. B, to collaborate with National Grid through their transmission connection generation, generation program in order to deliver the energy produced by the solar farm to the residents of Clinton.
Second. All right, Article Four has been approv- I have been moved and seconded. Um, questions, discussion? We have student speakers.
Right, two student speakers, if you guys could please come on. I have a speech right here. Real close.
Good morning, citizens and officials of Clinton. My name is Gianna Dino Taylor.
My name is Jacob LaPointe.
We are here to present our warrant about creating a solar farm in a community choice aggregation program, which is known as the CCA. Our warrant is asking the town to pay three million and three hundred thousand dollars to partner with National Grid to establish the farm on the brown field located at one seventy-two Sterling Street. Our proposal will end up saving. Our proposal will end up saving the whole community in Clinton a significant amount of money. We would like to start off by explaining why this would cost so much money. According to the twenty twenty-four Clinton Town Budget, the heating, lighting, and electricity bills for the town hall alone was fifty-eight thousand dollars, which can be reduced through this program. According to the Clean Energy Group, despite it costing so much money upfront, it could save the town government alone two hundred thousand dollars on electricity bills over time. Solar panels are an investment, which is why we have to pay so much money upfront, but these panels should last for many years. Forbes released a study showing that solar panels can last between twenty-five to thirty years before needing to be replaced. A program like this allows residents to choose their energy locally, saving them money. For example, in Lester National Grid, energy costs eighteen point two one three cents per kilowatt. But their CCA only costs ten point four four five cents per kilowatt, which is about forty-five percent cheaper. Sterling has its own solar program and has saved their residents a total of over eleven million dollars in electrical energy cost. Other towns in Massachusetts have saved large amounts of money from having solar farms in their community. Clinton should also join on the savings.
Thank you.
There are also many environmental benefits to creating a CCA. Unlike other forms of electricity generation, solar does not create any greenhouse gases emissions. From fuel are one of the top contributors to global warming and now using solar panels would be adding carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. Not only that, but the site would, we are proposing to build the solar farm on is currently a brownfield. The EPA has defined a brownfield as a property that is hazardous because of the ca- contamination pollution. That would take place otherwise dangerous and unusable piece of land and turn it into something that would actually be useful and eco-friendly. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts has been striving to switch over to clean energy for many years, and the town of Clinton makes that switch. We could be one step closer to a cleaner America. The cost of creating a CCA is high because we are billing it on a large area. We are hoping that this program is successful and expand further the property, we would need to be cleaned and capped off, which is a significant portion of the cost. Afterwards, we are the, we would have the solar panels installed and we would have to expect approximately one hundred panels installed. We would then need to connect the system to national, National Grid's network. So that the energy can be, be delivered to homes and businesses. In addition, we would need to establish a lightning protection system, make sure that the panels are safe from storms. And we also include an impact resistant glass to cover the panels in case of potential damage. We also include fencing for security purposes. In addition, we have calculated the cost of having a company clean and maintain the solar panels. Thank you for, thank you for your time in considering our warrant proposal. We hope that the town, we should have a CCA and make Clinton a more environmental friendly town.
Questions, comments, or discussion?
Speak about the solar panels, yep.
Sophia Gator Shewin, uh, Green Shade. I think this is, I agree with Article Four, Section A, because. We're taking solar energy, which is renewable energy, which is very eco-friendly.
Thank you.
Dave, you can go next, okay?
That area right now, it's very littered, looks kinda bad. So I think that back on the solar farm, we'll clean up the town.
Thank you.
Dave, you can go up. Just so, for anyone who didn't hear in their speech, the area they're referring to is right near Lan- uh, TC Lando's, it's what's called a brownfield. And it basically means there was a factory of some sort there, I think it was a wire factory, is that right? And, uh, because of that, there are all kinds of contaminants in the ground, and so it can't really be used for long.
My name's Gabrielle Montenegro, Fourth Street, and I agree with this warrant because. I think it will provide more efficient energy to the residents of Clinton and it can reduce people's bills, electric bills.
Thank you. Um, Mister, Mister Duffy, I think knows quite a bit about that area of land that is now contaminated and things are happening there. Phil, do you wanna mention anything about plans for that spot or anything?
Yes, and in the manner of, in the fashion of the town meeting, I'm going to do it by proposing an amendment to the article so we can have discussion about it. Um, I propose, uh, an amendment to the article. I propose that Section A, we, uh, to create a community aggregate program to the creation of a solar farm. Made up of approximately one hundred, two hundred square foot panels, to be located on the lot at twenty-nine South Meadow Road, rather than the lot one seventy-two Sterling Street.
Okay, so can I, do you mind if I just explain to the students?
Sure.
Okay, you got, um, raising your hand if you know where South Meadow is, right, so strictly, right, it's that narrow street right across, okay. So if you drive down and like you're coming from the middle school and you look to your left, you'll kinda see a gate there, and then behind that, you kinda see all these hills. That is a landfill, that's where the town used to bury their trash, correct?
Yes.
So that basically is also a place where it cannot be used right now. And the town has been talking about for a couple of years about putting a solar farm there, just like this class is proposing. So what all of Mister Duffy is suggesting for an amendment is that instead of putting it on land near Lando's. And instead, this solar farm is just put on that place in South Meadow instead.
Right, it's a basically same thing, but change of address. So be on the old landfill, which of course you wouldn't build a, a house on it or anything like that, it's.
Can we get a second? Is there anyone who wants a second? Just raise your hand and say second.
All right, second, so, um.
On, and, uh, and under discussion, if I may, um, as Mister Murray mentioned, that is a contaminated site. But just last week, we learned that we had been awarded the second half of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. In order to clean up a significant portion of that site. That site, um, was a wire factory. After the building was demolished, the owner didn't pay the taxes and the town took that property. So now the town owns that property. We have been working to clean it up so that we can sell it and put it back to a good use. Uh, and, um, right now, we see that as a jobs accommodating use. As we've seen so many factories in town being converted to residential units, uh, as we see businesses and manufacturing change over the decades and even centuries. We realize that in Clinton, we don't have a lot of modern space to accommodate manufacturing concerns and other. Businesses that are important to our economy, which means that we don't have a place for people to work. Um, that site at Eight Acres is actually our largest developable industrial zone site. Um, and we foresee the future of that site not being something passive like, um, solar, the solar panels, while commendable. But something active and that's something that helps people find a place to work.
So instead, the, the idea is instead, because of how that area is zoned, remember, I, if you guys look at the zoning map and find out what type of area they lived in. Is it zoned for industry then? The, we could actually have like some sort of like a big complex, kind of like a night road there, they're giving a bunch of jobs to people. So just for the instance of time, Mister Ngano. Can we just go right to a vote on the amendment and in that way, students who wanna talk about solar, whatever comments they have, they're able to do that.
All right, so we're just talking about the amendment, which is simply the change of address, all right? Uh, from, uh, one seventy-two Sterling to twenty-nine South Meadow Road. So all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand now, please. Thank you, and opposed. All right, the, so the amendment has passed, and now we're talking about a solar farm on the former landfill.
If anyone. Is really, you have someone? Yep, sorry.
I agree with this.
Yep, very close.
I agree with this bill. It will provide a source of renewable energy and decrease our liability on external electricity sources.
Thank you. Any other questions? This is a great idea, we've been looking into this for a long, long time, um. And that would be excellent use for the landfill, for the former landfill.
Anyone else who wanna get your credit?
As we say, somebody must have a fifty-nine average, come on, let's get me somebody.
We got someone over here, yep.
That's her. Let's not get there, let's not go there, hello there.
Hunter Bradley, Green Street.
Nice and close, please, close.
Hunter Bradley, Green Street, I agree with, with, uh, putting solar farms, uh, where, met, South Meadow Street. Because it'd be, it's, uh, since it's a renewable source, it also is, can lower an elec- the electricity bill for some that have. Or will use the solar, the solar panels.
Thank you.
We're gonna have panelists speak and then we'll, uh, do a vote and then we'll go into an intermission.
Caroline Morries, Island Street, I like this idea because it'll allow Clinton residents to save money.
All right, Mister Ngano, so why don't we go and.
Wanna do a voice vote again?
Whichever you prefer.
Oh, why don't you do that again for a grace word? I like to hear that. Oh, yays and nays, okay, yays and nays.
Those who are in favor of Article Four, please signify by saying yea. So environmentalists in the ground.
Yes.
And those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Those of the oil companies responding.
All right, Article Four has been approved as amended, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this point, we're going to do a five, you know, five to ten minute intermission. So if you need to get up, go to the bathroom, get a drink, you can do so right over here, and get up, stretch your legs, and I'll call you back in a couple of minutes.
Article Five.
Article Five, Mister Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate. Transfer from the stabilization fund or take from available funds, the sum of one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Or any other sum, said sum to be expended by the town for the purpose of creating a department of community service. And paying for its administration. This department will be charged with running programs that will provide opportunities for kids and teens to participate in sports and community service-based activities. Or act in any manner relating thereto.
Second.
All right, Article Five has been moved and seconded. Let's have our student speakers come forward for Article Fives. Very close to that mic.
Morning residents of Clinton, my name is Taylor Johnston.
And my name is Cecily DeVivo.
We are here today to propose a warrant, creating a program that allows kids to stay after school, participate in athletic activities, and do community service. We propose to spend one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars in order to create a department of community service to oversee these programs. There are many benefits from athletics for teens and kids. For example, the Center for Responsive School Staging, in an article, that teens and kids who participate in athletics are able to learn several skills. Including responsibility, sportsmanship, communication, and teamwork. The University of San Diego has reported that students that participate in sports may increase their test scores by up to forty percent as well. You might be wondering what makes these programs different from the athletic programs offered by the schools and parks and rec. Well, it gives community service opportunities in addition to traditional sporting opportunities. There are several clubs and organizations at Clinton High School that require members to complete a specific number of community service hours to maintain their membership. For example, the National Honor Society requires sophomores to complete twenty-five hours of community service and juniors to complete fifty hours. Having high schoolers coach and mentor younger kids through these programs will allow those high school students to reach their community service goals.
The programs that will be offered by this department will include both after-school activities and summer camps. These programs will include both athletics and community service. Some days will be focused solely on athletics and other days will focus on a community service project. Some of the athletic programs would include tennis, flag football, basketball, volleyball, hockey, badminton, soccer, and more. We believe that by offering a wide variety of sports, we're able to attract more attendees. It will allow children who do not have access to sport teams to be able to participate in athletic programs. Some examples of community service projects may include collecting and donating school supplies, cleaning up parks to help the environment, downtown renovation. Picking up trash, volunteering at the senior center a week, delivering food for Meals on Wheels, and more. All of these activities are beneficial to the community and help teach kids and teens important life skills that we use throughout their lives. Not only will this department benefit the participants, but also parents and businesses. Parents who work late will have a safe place for their children to stay until they can connect them up. This also may be easier for some parents whose schedule would not allow to attend a child's travel games. Furthermore, this department could partner with small businesses in town to give work experience for teens benefiting all parties. In conclusion, this program would be helpful to the residents of Clinton. We hope you will support, will vote to support our class. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, questions, comments, or discussion on Article Five about a Department of Community Service?
Uh, just so everyone's aware, it's not, if you have already spoken, I'm going to try to first let people who haven't yet spoken go first, so that, that way they can get their credit. Um, just see.
Logan, nice and close.
Hi, my name is Logan, my name's Logan Sharon, and, um, I disagree with this because we already have a rec center and a YMCA around here.
Someone else?
Go ahead, Mister Pecky.
Sam Pecky, Stoneford Circle. Um, I think, I like Article Five, it's a good way for kids in high school to earn community service hours if they wish to. And I think it'd be good for them, for like the honor society, if they want to like get community hours for it.
Have you gotten it, Natalie? Yeah, go ahead, Alice.
I agree with this article because not only does it involve art, um, athletics, but you can also do community service with it. So it allows students to be able to participate in both.
It's turned up. Hands up, anyone else? Faith, go ahead.
Uh, yep.
Say something.
Faith Camoni, Lakeside.
Microphone.
Yep.
Faith Camoni, Lakeside, I, I think this article could improve kids' social and athletics.
Yes, anybody up, up here? Yes. Laura Taylor.
Sorry. Uh, Laura from Parks and Rec, I know that our Director Malouf has been a big proponent of. Some sort of teen community center, and I know that's been sort of talked about in town over the past couple of years. So I know that Parks and Rec would be in favor of this and doing anything to sort of help create this department, aid this department. Make it happen, offer space, it's probably best served within the schools if it's gonna be part of an after-school program. But Parks and Rec would be in favor of this, it is a segment of the population that has needs and sometimes is ignored.
Very good. Anybody else? This is a, this is a, a personal thing with me, uh, make sure that next year, when you go to Clinton High School. You sign up for the Excel Club, cause the Excel Club at Clinton High School is getting more and more active, and that's a community service club. Anybody can join, and they do all kinds of great things all year long. So if you're interested in community service, make sure you do that. Somebody else, sorry about that, uh, soapbox there.
Jenna, you can go, and then we'll, uh, go off to a vote, Mister Ngano.
Okay.
Jenna Stevens, View Street, some sports that are in this, uh, like, service. Aren't in the schools and would actually help out people that aren't available to buy certain equipment for sports. And it also helps people in the high school have community service hours if they don't wanna pick up trash or do other things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've had discussion, both sides of it all, uh, so Article Five will now vote. All those in favor of Article Five as presented, please signify by raising your hand now, please. Thank you, and opposed. Thank you, the article has been approved. Very good.
Very fine.
All right, we're on to Article Six.
Mister Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate. Borrow, transfer from the stabilization fund, or transfer from available funds, the sum of four million dollars. Or any other sum, said sum to be expended for the creation of a municipal-owned and managed athletic facility. To be built on a section of the soccer fields located between West Boylston Street and South Meadow Road. Or act in any manner relating thereto.
Second.
All right, Article Six has been moved and seconded. For a four million dollar athletic facility to be built on our soccer fields, meaning our student speakers, please.
Speakers, please, for this class, thank you. Jack and Helen.
Nice and loud, most of us can't hear, we're, we're rolled up here on this, uh, stage here.
Tony, my name is Jack Wilson.
My name is Chloe Senna Swisher.
We are proposing to build a municipal-owned athletic complex, which we will name Clinton Sports Complex, or CSC. On part of the field between South Meadow Street and West Boylston Street. This project will cost an estimated four million dollars, and while this is a big project, it will pay off in the long run. This complex will benefit the entire community of Clinton. Cunningham Recreation, a supplier of athletic equipment, has reported that athletics provide kids and teens with opportunities to socialize and make new friends. This would be a great opportunity for kids to have a safe environment to go to after school instead of roaming around town. According to My Kids Vision, an organization dedicated to reducing screen tact to rent myopia has written that the average teen spends eight hours and forty minutes per day on their phone. The CSC would, the CSC would help reduce the number of hours spent on their phones by providing healthy and interactive activities. Furthermore, this would promote inclusivity and family bonding. An article by the independent, a reputable British news source disclosed that the average family only spends six hours of activity time per week. Teens are spending more time on their phones each day than with their family over the course of a whole week, which is appalling. The CSC would improve family bonding by offering family-friendly activities.
Thank you.
We have researched and found a well-priced prefabricated metal athletic complex. Inside would be two high school regulation-sized basketball courts, bleachers, bathrooms, a security system, lockers, and more. The courts can be used for multiple sports, including basketball, volleyball, pickleball, floor hockey, and many others. We will also be able to use the field next to the complex for outdoor activities. We have also researched and included in our cost of fire alarm and, and system insurance. There are many ways that this complex will be able to make money to turn the investment from this warrant into a profit. There will be a monthly membership fee with two different rates for in-town and out-of-town members. There will be scheduled rental times for sport leagues to use these courts. There will also be time set aside for people to rent the facility for personal functions such as a birthday party. Other so, another source of income for this facility would be a snack shop, which will sell concessions to visitors. In addition to the complex making money, there will also be ways that the state can help build the facility through grants. These grants are available for low-income towns and help build facilities that will create job opportunities for residents. We believe that our complex would fit in the, would fit in that category. Not only would this create job opportunities, but the complex could partner with Parks and Rec to create sport leagues for adults in our community and surrounding communities. In summary, this one could create an athletic complex that would benefit the community by giving kids and teens a healthy alternative to electronics. Give parents a safe place for the children while they work during after-school hours, and provide a facility for Parks and Rec to run leagues for adults. Vote in favor for this warrant to make Clinton more active. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Mister Kovas.
This is a great. This is a great idea. Um, the town of Clinton right now has a resource shortage when it comes to gym space, and as we've heard here today numerous times, uh, whether it was adding volleyball programs or other sports, um, there's just not enough space for all these programs to come in together and, uh, get the, the adequate space that they need at the time. Having a facility like this, um, would allow Plotonians the opportunity to stay in town to get the time that they need versus having to go to Four Kicks in Ball Row or Game On in Fitchburg, which could cost, you know, o- over a hundred dollars an hour. Um, if you expand the use of that facility, uh, to, to make it accessible to the, the seniors in this, in this town by whether it's a walking track, um, once weather turns and we, we head into the doldrums of the winter, it allows people to get out and still have an opportunity to exercise, still provi, uh, provides an opportunity for socializing with one another. That's a great, great location for it to be. So, very well done, and that, we've actually looked into this, and, and that's right in the ballpark, M O Y, so great job on your research as well.
Oh, thank you. Questions? Questions, comments?
All right, discussion. There's a comment. Go ahead, Mariani.
I'm Mariani Silva, and I think this will be great because it'll help kids who don't have access to physical activities.
Thank you.
Eli? Eli?
Very timely, too, in light of the limited use of, of a place like Saint John's Gym that used to be used all the time. So that's, it's, it's perfect timing. We had somebody coming down and... Go ahead. Sorry, I cut into your time there. I saw you coming down.
I'm Eli Sullivan, and I'm from Lakeside Ave, and I disagree with this, uh, warrant. It's because of four million dollars, a lot of money, which is seven hundred thousand dollars more than the police department's budget. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, so he, he looked at the town's budget and he checked and ran it against the police department's budget. He realized that this would cost more than the entire police department has given it an entire year. So Chief Coin, I thought we thought you would appreciate that.
Guys could take a year off, maybe, something like that.
Let's do, let's do both.
Yes.
I oppose this just because taking away from the soccer fields would be really kind of like harsh to the people that play soccer. As a player myself, we need these fields. I've seen the amount of younger kids that, that run around soccer fields playing all day, and there's a ton of them. Taking away from soccer fields wouldn't be fair to the people that play on these. Not to mention the fact that these are also used for field talk.
Yeah. Thank you.
Only, only go ahead.
Yes.
I disagree with this because we already have enough fields and places to play sports, so I feel like it would just be a waste of money.
Okay, thank you.
Vincent, I'm prioritizing people who haven't yet spoken Italian. Did you have your hand up? Did you have your hand, Natalia? You can go next, okay?
Vincent Mendoza, Prescott Street, and I, there's, I believe this would be a waste of money and resources because there's other means of exercise, such as Saint John's Gym in Clinton.
Thank you.
All right, Natalia, you win your hand raised. Natalia's gonna go, and then I mean, go next.
Natalia, rolling out Savito. I also disagree because I feel like there's not enough space already on that soccer field and then for them to take away the space from the schools, plus I didn't mention how big the facility would be.
When I asked, I did, or someone I had talked to that had wanted to make an amendment to, about the location. Who was that that I had talked to a few minutes ago?
That might not be a bad idea at all.
Is that, right, who was that? Someone I made a, talked to me a few minutes ago? Okay, I guess not.
You know, don't, don't forget, if, if there is a new Clinton middle school in, in, in our future, that the, you know, there'll, there'll be fields in front of this, of the new school, which may, you know, I, I, I don't know enough about it, but, um, I think it would be smart to make an amendment. I really do.
Yeah, go ahead, Don Stiles.
Dominic Braga, Eileen Avenue. Currently, Saint John's is partially owned by Above the Rim, which is a basketball training program, and is owned by the church. So there isn't many hours where the public can get in the gym if at all.
Very true.
Mister Kovas, you know a lot about them, right? Yeah. Anyone who hasn't spoken yet who would like to? I mean, go ahead. Just make a general comment about it, whether you think this is a good idea or not?
Hi, I'm Ace Pita, High Street. I feel like the, this complex would be a great opportunity for special middle schoolers and high schoolers to get, of their phones and have more exercise.
Very good.
Were you making an amendment, Manny? Yep, all right, I'm gonna have someone up. She has an amendment to make.
Oh, good.
Madison Tuttle, and I think we should change the location from the soccer fields to make it to, so it's at the Brown Field Law on Sterling Street. Um, so we don't take away from the soccer fields, like they were saying. Thank you.
All right. That might be right up Mister Duffy's alley, because that would be a business anyways. It would be going here and at least create some jobs.
We need a second. First, is there a second to that? Okay, so the amendment has been moved and seconded to, instead of right on our soccer fields, to put it at one seventy-two Sterling Street.
Something tells me Mister Duffy has a comment.
Absolutely.
I speak in opposition to the amendment, um, to relocate to one seventy-two Sterling Street, specifically to one seventy-two Sterling Street, for the reasons that I described while discussing our earlier warrant article. Um, I think the higher and better use for the community at large, um, is an income-generating, jobs-accommodating use, um, rather than, uh, rec, recreational use. And I submit it that in, as a matter of fairness, um, our, this warrant article is heavily loaded with articles. This warrant is heavily loaded with articles that address recreation and childhood activities. Um, but we are a community of people of many ages and many needs, and I propose that the better community use for one seventy-two Sterling Street is economic, as I described earlier. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So Mister Ngano, in the interest of time, is what we're gonna do, okay? So, um, Mister Duffy's just explained that he thinks, no, we shouldn't move it to that location because we should use that location instead for something like industry, like a, like a much larger business and not focus on recreation.
Yes.
Yes. So, here's, we're gonna, so here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna vote on this amendment. If you're voting yes, you're saying that you think that we should build this facility at the location, um, at that brown field.
One seventy-two Sterling.
If you are against it, then you're saying, no, we should build it where the soccer field is, uh, near South Meadow. All right, so.
So, so, okay, so we're voting on the amendment, so, um, this would be, uh, all those in favor of, of moving this facility to one seventy-two Sterling Street, the brown field, please signify by raising your hand now, please. Okay, and those who would rather see it left on the soccer fields, please signify, that's the no of the amendment, signify by raising your hand. We need counters, I think.
You want, yep, we can do a count.
Yeah, wanna do that again? So we're talking about the amendment, I guess, first, so, uh, maybe I should, that might have been my fault, uh, Mister Murray. The, the amendment is to move the facility to one seventy-two Sterling Street. So all those in favor of moving this facility to one seventy-two Sterling Street, signify by raising your hand now.
And just like we practice raising our hand high, remember nineteen.
Okay. Thank you. And how many are opposed to the amendment, which would mean leave it where you suggested in the first place? So those opposed, raise your hand.
Terry, could you, could you, could you just clarify that? I think, I think the confusion is by vote, voting, no, you're not saying you're approving it. You're just saying, I, I think they're confused, and I'm confused, that by voting no, you're not saying that.
We're voting on the location.
Right, that's the thing. So by voting no, you're not saying that you're gonna build it up at the school. You're just saying leave, leave the amendment the way it wa, the work the way it was, correct?
You're leaving the, I, I do believe the first vote was passed.
Believe, I believe it has passed.
Yes.
Sorry, Mister Duffy. All right, um, Mariani, you want to make a comment? No? Okay, so, at this point then, because we still have, we'll have two warrants after this, why don't we go into this vote? I think this is our most controversial vote of the day.
I think it is.
Well, now we'll go through a vote to see whether we build in a building or not, and it would be, to be built, the brown field on Sterling Street.
Right, all right. All those in favor of Article Six, or, or putting this complex on one seventy-two Sterling Street, correct? I think I got confused now.
We're voting whether or not to build.
Yep.
If you like the idea, you would say yes. If you don't, if you don't think it should be built at all, then you would say no.
Yes, all those in favor of building this complex, signify by raising your hand now, please. Interesting. All right, hands down, and all those opposed. Oh. I do believe it passed. I think we have a sports complex, but it's.
I think you should go with a voice vote.
People have. Now, just, just to, uh, clarify something, in, in a, in a real town meeting, something like that, when it's that close, of course, we have counters who run around and actually get a count, bring it to me, and we count. Another way to do it, uh, which we can't do today, is a ballot vote. And you would get a, a, a piece of paper with a big yes on one side and a no on the other side. And you would rip it in half and, and come down front and put it in a box, your vote. And then once again.
A two-thirds vote because of the amount of money being spent?
I, I think it probably would. I know, uh, anything that's above and beyond usually is two, is two-thirds. Even the school, for instance, is gonna be a two-thirds vote, um, Monday night. So I think we're having a, we're having an athletic complex. Um, I, and another thing, I, I think I would have just maybe cut out the location altogether and just say, let's build a complex. And I think that would have been almost unanimous, almost. Um, but anyway, so we're on to what? Article Seven.
Article Seven.
Let's move the controversy.
Go ahead.
Mister Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from the stabilization fund or take from available funds the sum of fifty thousand dollars or any other sum, said some to be expended by the town for the purpose of creating five water filling stations in public parks or act in any manner relating thereto.
Second.
All right, Article Seven has been moved and seconded. Student speakers, please.
Hello, select board members. My name is Eva Castratero.
And I'm Mary Perus, and we are far, part of Mister Braille's Block Five class. We have come to speak to you about adding water filling stations around Clinton. Around five hundred and eighteen thousand people are hospitalized each year from dehydration. Throughout central mass, there are no water bubblers easily accessible by the public.
While doing research, we found that in Clinton, Hudson, Worcester, Sterling, and many other neighboring towns, there was no clear explanation about having any water bubblers near. Water bubblers can mostly be found in schools, but we should have them easily accessible to anyone who needs it. To purchase the water filling stations, it would cost from three thousand to seven thousand dollars, depending on what filling station we buy. We found some options on the website, prodrinkingfountains.com, with options such as dog bowls, regular bubblers, water bottle sensors, wall-mounted freestanding, and more. We agree the best fit for our town is the outdoor drinking fountain and water follow, water bottle filling station. To plumbing installings would be from one thousand to three thousand dollars or less. As a town today, we can get discounts depending on where we buy as well. There are many different ways we can get money for this, like asking for grants, fundraising, donating, or tax money. We plan to put these filling stations in popular areas of Clinton. We would like to put one at the track, one at Central Park, two along street, along Main Street and Fuller Field. These are all popular destinations where people could be playing sports, going on a jog, or watching games in the heat. This gets us to a grand total of five water filling stations costing around fifty thousand dollars or less. It is hard to get an exact estimate because there are so many filling stations to choose from and trusted plumbing companies around Clinton. We need water filling stations for overall health, and it is also economically friendly. Instead of buying numerous water jugs and water bottles which pollute the land of plastic, we would have these stations so people can reuse their own water bottles. In just Massachusetts alone, we waste three-point-four million plastic bottles each year. These water filling stations can be wall-mounted to the building that have already had plumbing, reducing the cost more, or freestanding in the field, which are easier to access but a bit more expensive. These fountains will be low maintenance, easy to clean, and also come in the option of, to be freeze-proof, making them last through all types of weather, preventing bursting pipes. We would do construction temporarily, um, block, block off certain spots, but it wouldn't interfere with any roads or big events. For Fuller Field and Track, and at the track, we can start construction in the summer after all school sports seasons have concluded. At Central Park and Main Street, it would be a bit more disrupting, but it will be no longer than a week to install. And as long as there are no events occurring, it should be easy. As you can see, the evidence presented today can be a huge improvement for Clinton. It is safe, affordable.
for Clinton, it is safe, affordable, easy to use, and economically friendly. They are easy to access, and we keep them clean and usable. It can be a game changer for neighboring towns to follow our lead.
Thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedules to listen to us speak about this topic. Have a great day.
Thank you. Questions, comments, discussion, how about from up here, anyone, uh?
Lay out any more.
Mr. Duffy, please don't amend this one, okay, please. Questions, comments, and discussion.
Uh, who's he in his name? Yep, right, right. Mr. Braille, I don't teach your students, so feel free to call them and send them up too.
Writer, attorney, friend with Lain, and I agree with this article because we do not have enough water fountains around Clinton.
Thank you.
Emmeline, you can go next.
Annabelle Marshall, I agree with this because I think it can be helpful with over the summer when it's hot and humid out, if people are being active outside. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, right, you know?
Emily Gonzalez, High Street, I agree with this article because I think the water filling stations at parks right now are really old and they don't work. So, if we added new ones, it would be a good cause for Clinton.
Thank you.
Next one.
Price New, Colonial Drive, I believe these water stations will help us keep hydrated and healthy during the summer.
Very good, yes, they do. They will. Someone else, here we go.
You have some work to go now?
Yes, we do.
My name is Cassidy Still, I live on Chastis Street, and I agree with this because the walk here was pretty hard and there was no water, because I forgot to bring a water bottle.
Thank you.
Everybody has to talk about watch. Personal experiences always make the best arguments, don't they?
My name's LJ Bosno, I think that this could be beneficial for our town, and they should be added throughout the whole town and not just, uh, public perks.
Thank you.
Ryan, you have the name?
Ryan Brennan. I'm Ryan Brennan, West Street, I'm against this, uh, I'm opposed to this article because it never said that they would maintenance them, and it could get very dirty.
Interesting.
Not just, not a, uh, the issue might not just be that it gets, uh, dirty, but also, you know, I think at least the ones in the school that have the, you know, the water bottle ones, I miss, uh, you need filters regularly, so there is kind of a maintenance cost as well. Andrew, go ahead.
Andrew De, Andrew Deziata, Front Street, I think this is a great idea because it can, like, make a very convenient place to fill up your water bottle. And, yeah, there's a lot of plastic waste, so, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
They're letting them have it, they want Annie to go, they want Phoenix to go, and then we'll have a vote.
Annie, Annie Mitchell, King Street, um, I believe this is very beneficial because there are lots of teams who walk around, and especially during this warm weather, so this will keep them hydrated.
Thank you.
Yep, go ahead, Phoenix, and then we'll have a vote, Mr. Braille.
Okay.
My name is Phoenix Wager, Beacon Street, I am opposed to this bill because there are people who aren't very healthy or hygienic, and this can affect the spread of germs with the water.
Alright, interesting. Alright, we've had a lot of discussion on this one, and it does sound like, uh, it would be just a great thing, but certainly some other, uh, considerations have been brought up by these young men over here, um, so we have to think about it. So, on Article Seven, all those in favor of Article Seven, creating five water filling stations, uh, sit, please signify by raising your hand now, please. Thank you, hands down, and those opposed. Thank you, the article has been approved.
And it's amazing. We're moving on to, um, Article Eight, this is.
This is it.
Also, Mr. Braille's group, and this is our last article for a lockdown meeting. Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from the stabilization fund or transfer from available funds, the sum of four hundred thousand dollars or any other sum, said sum to be expended for the creation of a municipal run helpline that will be staffed by therapists, social workers, psychologists, and psychiatrists who will provide resources and counseling to residents struggling with mental health or substance abuse disorders, or act in any manner relating thereto.
Second.
Alright, Article Eight has been moved and seconded. Student speakers are already there waiting, alright, great, go ahead.
I'm Jocelyn Ziegler.
I'm Kadenx Latsney. This article that my class is proposing is free helpline in Clinton for those struggling with mental health, drug addiction, alcoholism, and homelessness. This helpline will allow citizens to get in contact with social workers and psychiatrists whenever they need, as we are hoping to make the helpline open twenty-four seven. We hope to acquire about two hundred and eighty-two thousand, which is less than what we had originally proposed, to be able to create this helpline. Us students have put a lot of effort into researching costs and have come up with the following prices. A one-eight-hundred number from grasshopper.com costs thirty-two dollars a month, adding up to three hundred and eighty-four dollars a year. Aside from the phone number, we have also researched how much social workers and psychiatrists charge, and who would volunteer their services towards this hotline. Nearby social workers will charge twenty-seven dollars per hour, adding up to fifty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-seven per year.
There will be a need for more than one of each worker, though. We will have five employees that cost, uh, two, two hundred and eighty-two thousand per year. We have found that for the town of around fourteen thousand people, five workers would be the minimum. Average mental health calls last around fifteen minutes, so each social worker slash psychiatrist would be able to help around four people per hour, with five workers, around twenty people will be helped per hour. Not to mention the fact that thirty-four percent of calls to Massachusetts helplines go unanswered. So, if we have a twenty-four seven hotline, there will be more calls being answered, and with suicide being the second leading cause of death for young people in America, more calls means more lives saved. If people from Clinton call this hotline at the same rate that Americans call the national hotline, then around one thousand people in Clinton will call our number in just one year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, very serious topic, Article Eight, any discussion, questions, comments?
So, I do think that this, um, I'm at this topic's beneficial because, um, nine percent of phone calls that, that are made to nine-eight-eight, which is the, um, on the hotline that, like, US provides for people in need, I'm like, they're usually declined or not, like, picked up, um, so, like, a local hotline will, like, hopefully, like, just reduce that amount of hanging up, I guess.
The, uh, police department representatives have anything to say, you are involved in, in these types of?
Yeah, one's losing coming up, and then, uh, these, these department, absolutely, I'm sure this is something that they regularly, they deal with.
Um, I disagree with this because there is already seven helplines in Massachusetts, and if one doesn't pick up, you can try other ones, and there is a guaranteed chance that they will pick up. Um, also, it's only nine percent of calls that are never picked up, which is a small number and isn't a big deal.
Thank you. Chief Coyne, you want to?
Yep, Brian Coyne, Chief.
Hi, my name is Maria Cardenas, I live on Winter Street, I agree with this article because I know many people who struggle mentally, and I think this would be beneficial for them, thank you.
Thank you.
The, the police department was gonna make a comment, so let's let them, uh, do that first, and then we'll have more student speakers.
Thank you, Brian Coyne, again, Chief of Police. Uh, I, I'd agree with the article, there's a lot of logistics of, of where this center would be located and, and not only funded, but, but staffed, but I think that this is a major problem in, in the police department, we see it throughout the community, a, as well as other communities throughout the Commonwealth, throughout the nation, and it not only affects, uh, the major, major block of our population, but a lot of young people and people your age, so I'd be totally in one thousand percent in favor of something like this, there'd be a lot of logistics, and, and like they said, this is a very serious issue, and it's one that you guys did a great job to come up with, as, as, uh, eighth graders to recognize that this is something that a community like ours, like, communities, like I said, throughout the whole country and the whole nation need. And I, I applaud you guys for coming up and, and taking a matter on like this, we had a lot of things about recreation and sidewalks, but this really is a serious matter, and you guys did a great job to recognize and identify that this is something that we should, the town should be looking at and pursuing. And like I said, there's a lot of logistics, but I'd be a hundred percent in being full support, you'd have the support from the Clinton Police Department to go forward, move forward with something like this, a helpline, a help center, uh, hours that, that in a center, somebody could walk in, anything like that, anything that could help our community, any resources and support, because we do see that calls go unanswered, we do see that beds and facilities aren't available, we do see that help sometimes when it's needed isn't always available. So, we'd like to see that we can supplement what the federal government, what the state government does, and we can supplement it with our own resources and support and help here in town. I'd be in full support of that.
Thank you.
And Zoe, you can go next, okay?
Gabriella Cruz, Branch Street.
Get to the microphone, I'll get your voice.
I think that this article is a really great idea because you're allowing, like, people to find the guidance since, like, in life, like, that people may not.
Uh, Gemza Rivera, Lakeside, I agree with this article because I think it would be helpful for somebody to call a trustworthy number to talk about their problems.
Good. Who hasn't spoken already?
There's a hand way in the back.
Go ahead, nanny. Got someone who made your attempt, so come on in, just wait for a minute, okay?
Autumn Burke, Nashville Street, I think that it would be help, I think that it would be helpful to have this because although only nine percent of calls get declined, it'd be helpful to make more calls be available and more help for people.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, Jacob Russo from Lakeside, um, I think this is a really good idea because not many people, like, know about it from, like, what I've heard.
Louis Berdicia, Lakeside Ave, um, I think this is a great idea because it can help with people with mental disorders and, you know, whatever they're going through, like addiction and all that.
Nancy, who's that in the first room, was that Anvil? Yep, go ahead, Anvil. Prioritizing people who haven't spoken yet, so they can get their credit.
Annabelle, I just, I agree with Article Eight because I, I don't see anything wrong with adding another hotline, just so, what's, what, what's wrong with having more than one? Because it helps more people, and I believe it's important for, um, people to get the help they need.
Thank you.
Amy, Amy, go ahead.
Jay Nogondo, Lakeside Ave, I agree with this article because problems like these, if not help, they can make people go insane or cause deaths.
Yeah, even if you want to go ahead.
I agree with this, there's some people out there in this town that have serious problems, and they could really help them.
Well, we do, ahead.
I agree with this article because, uh, people in town, it might be helpful to know that there's something that they can reach out for if they have a mental issue. It's nice to know there's something in town.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Braille, what we're gonna do at this point anyways is that we're going to have a vote, and then, um, we'll just, we'll, we'll, we'll close it off, okay?
Alright, uh, do you like to do the traditional vote, or you wanna make some noise again?
Do a traditional vote or yell for the last one?
Upset, yeah.
This is to whether or not to build this call center that would focus on mental health, so all those in favor, please say yea. All those opposed, please say nay.
The noes have, no, just kidding. Alright, that Article, Article Eight was approved, congratulations, action.
I've been talking to some the other teachers, or some of the teachers that are here, and I've also been talking to our representative that's here. And I must say that I think that this may very well have been the best lockdown meeting, with the warrants you guys came up with, participation there was, and the guy's really, yourselves.